All right, we'll now consider Council Business Item Number 4.2. City Clerk, please read the title of the item.
Consideration of a Request by Councilmember Trecider to Consider Adjustment to Irvine's Default Electrical Power Mix Profile Through Orange County Power Authority.
And those participating via Zoom may now raise their hand. This item was agendized at the request of Councilmember Trecider. At this time, I will turn to her for her opening comments.
Thank you. Yes, I agendized this because I became aware as of earlier this month that OCPA is now working with an energy market that is quite different from when it was founded. And it is worth reevaluating, I think, what our plans are for energy mixes in the next couple of years. We had a discussion about this on the OCPA Board Meeting yesterday, and the OCPA Board recommended that we consider potentially opting down as a default our Irvine customers to the mid-tier, which is the Smart Choice, and also revising down the percentage renewable energy in those tiers while making up for it with carbon-free energy. And I have invited the OCPA staff to come here and present this information. I'm hoping that they would have a chance to present it.
Okay. Do they have a presentation? Is that on the... Okay. Well, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thank you so much for having us here today. So I have a presentation that's loaded. Procurement Strategy for the City of Irvine for '25 through 2027. So my name is Joe Moska. I'm the CEO of Orange County Power Authority, also known as OCPA. I'm joined by several OCPA team members who will assist me with today's presentation and be available for any questions you might have afterward. This OCPA team has decades of experience in the energy sector. Before I start, I'd like to take a moment to just level set. Since there are some folks probably in the audience that have not heard of OCPA, OCPA began with a discussion in this chamber in 2018 to form a Community Choice Aggregation Program, otherwise known as CCA, to give its residents and businesses a choice in their energy future and as a strategy for reducing greenhouse gas emissions associated with the generation of electricity from their needs. In 2021, Irvine City Council established OCPA and approved its initial startup funding. OCPA began serving in 2022 and is now one of 25 CCAs in California. California CCAs serve about 14 million people living in 200 communities, representing over a quarter of the electricity load of the state of California. In addition to giving customers in Irvine a choice for renewable energy at affordable rates, OCPA is a not-for-profit public agency that reinvests revenues back into the communities that we serve, benefiting all customers and assisting them with their sustainability goals. Now, some background as to the question before you tonight and why we're here. Since 2022, we have been tracking the steady and steep increase in renewable energy prices through our Risk Oversight Committee and communicating this trend to our board members who participate in this committee. On September 17th, the OCPA Board formed an ad hoc committee to address the increasing cost of renewable energy and evaluate its power procurement strategies in light of this trend. The committee, in collaboration with OCPA staff, was tasked with reporting recommended changes to the Board by the end of 2024 to optimize OCPA's future power procurement and procurement strategies. On November 5th, OCPA staff discussed the financial outlook with this committee, highlighting the challenges from unprecedented escalating energy costs and identifying opportunities to mitigate these costs. Since 2022, the cost of eligible renewable energy, PCC-1, has surged by nearly 400%. And resource adequacy capacity prices have more than tripled in three years. Volatile market conditions have driven actual energy costs from $99 a megawatt hour in fiscal year '22-'23 to $121 a megawatt hour in fiscal year '23-'24, with projections indicating a further increase to about $134 per megawatt hour in 2025. Now, I'll turn over the presentation to Tiffany Law, our OCPA CFO, who will walk you through the proposed procurement strategy, which was presented to the OCPA Board of Directors just yesterday.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. During OCPA's special Board Meeting yesterday, our Board Director staff to pursue the ideal scenario, which offers the most balanced approach, aligning with our strategic goals and reinforcing our commitment to affordability, sustainability, and customer choice. Under the ideal scenario, OCPA will maintain our current rate design to ensure stability and predictability for our customers. For our basic choice, we will continue to offer a 3% discount compared to SCE's equivalent generation rates. For Smart Choice, we will be set at Basic Choice plus 1 cent per kilowatt hour. For 100% renewable choice, it will be set at Basic Choice plus 1.5 cents per kilowatt hour. For 2025 and 2026, Smart Choice will become the default rate for Irvine customers. Most importantly, Irvine customers will always have the choice to opt up to 100% renewable choice or to opt down to Basic Choice at the convenience, ensuring maximum flexibility at all time. We will temporarily adjust the renewable energy content in Smart Choice to 55% plus 40% carbon-free energy for 2025 and 60% plus 40% carbon-free energy for 2026. These measures provide approximately $125 million in savings. This strategy aligns with practices used by other CCA, such as Clean Power Alliance, which offers energy products with 50% renewable energy plus 40% carbon-free energy. Our team is eager to continue our collaboration with Irvine staff to develop local generation projects, such as Great Park Local Generation Project, including special rate structures that benefits our communities and promote local energy independence. It is important to note that our OCPA Smart Choice Plan will continue to offer significantly more renewable energy than SCE's default product, which is at 37.6% renewable content. Our plan, offering 55% to 60% plus 40% carbon-free energy, demonstrates our strong commitment to clean energy provision. OCPA maintains a reserve of 30% or higher to ensure long-term financial planning and risk mitigation. This financial buffer secures energy at competitive prices, providing stable rates and reliable, affordable renewable energy to our customers. Healthy reserves are crucial for absorbing external shocks beyond OCPA control, such as potential financial risks from changes in member participation, uncertainties around SCE generation and PCI rates, and the effects of high energy prices. They also provide a safety net against customer defaults on payments during economic downturns and regulatory changes. OCPA is committed to aligning with industry standards, ensuring fiscal responsibility, and achieving favorable credit ratings. Credit ratings agencies typically expect CCAs to maintain operating reserve equivalent to about 33% to 56% of annual operating expenditures. In compliance with this standard, OCPA Board has approved a reserve policy to budget between 30% to 50% of our total operating expenses as our annual reserves to maintain robust financial health. The ideal scenario has been strategically developed to maintain OCPA's current rate design and effectively address energy market challenges over the next two years, ensuring we remain competitive with our peers. This comprehensive strategy is designed to protect our customers from potential rate shocks, support our financial health, and uphold our mission to provide affordable and sustainable energy choices. It ensures a balance between fiscal sustainability and the achievement of both OCPA's and Irvine's climate action goals. Jackie Henderson, our Director of Communication and External Affairs, will now share our communication plan regarding the proposed changes with our Irvine customers.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and distinguished Councilmembers. I want to share our proposal for communicating with OCPA customers in Irvine, which is one of our most important factors in making sure this is a successful transition. OCPA will plan to notify OCPA customers in Irvine of the change in default rate product twice via direct mail, with key information included to be as follows. Customers who opted down to Basic Choice, which costs 3% less than the SCE equivalent product, will stay at Basic Choice. No change will be made to their choice of electricity plan. Customers who want to stay at 100% renewable choice can opt up at any time. Customers who want to opt down to Basic Choice can do so at any time. Smart Choice cost is 1 cent per kilowatt hour more than Basic Choice, and 100% renewable choice is 1.5 cents more per kilowatt hour than Basic Choice. This change to Smart Choice as the default plan will take place March 1st, 2025. This change is temporary and will return to 100% renewable choice in January 2027. The change to help ensure renewable energy affordability while continuing to achieve OCPA and Irvine's climate action goals. It will also include contact information for any questions or concerns customers may have. These mailings will be planned for January 2025 and February 2025, ahead of any changes. That concludes our proposal and presentation this evening. The team is here for any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you so much. I do have a few questions to start off with, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Can you share if any other CCAs are experiencing what OCPA is experiencing right now? And if so, what have they done or planned to do with their customers?
Absolutely, and I will turn that over to our Director of Power Procurement, Louis Ting.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. What I've done is I've talked to industry, not just on the other CCAs, but also from the other developers that are also signing either short or long-term contracts. They're also talking about making adjustments due to the fact that the energy prices has been so volatile this year, last year, all the way from 2022, with the increases over 100%, 200% on some of the renewable products. They're making changes from either opting down customers or they're adjusting their rates accordingly. So OCPA, as Joe has mentioned clearly, and also Tiffany's too, that the rates will remain the same. However, we're just changing the customer based on the products they choose.
Okay, so...
Mayor, just a question. Certainly, the issues that we're seeing in the energy market are global, and so everybody's feeling that projects are not coming online as they were supposed to come online. So everybody's feeling that. Not everybody is in the same situation. Let's remember that OCPA is a couple of years old. So there are some CCAs that may have entered into more long-term contracts or not as exposed to the short-term market, which is somewhere we want to be in the future. So not every CCA is in the same position. OCPA also, when at launch, as you may know, launched most of its cities at 100%. That means that we had, on the one hand, laud the fact that we have about 70%, over 70% sales at 100% renewable energy. But it also means that we're very different than other CCAs in the fact that we have such a high demand for renewable energy. And what we're seeing right now over the last couple of years, as I mentioned, is a 400% increase in the cost of renewable energy. So over the next couple of years, as we see more projects coming online, more clean energy projects, in fact, a couple of our projects coming online, as we see more projects coming online for other load-serving entities, other IOUs and CCAs, those prices for renewable energy is going to come down. In fact, we're projecting into 2027 that that price is coming down. Hence, the strategy of what do we do for '25 and '26, so...
So the rates are staying the same, but we're changing which tier people are enrolled in?
So let me just reframe it. So the rate design is staying the same. The rate designs. The rate design, which is Basic Choice, is 3% less than SCE's equivalent generation rate. They only have one product, Basic Choice, or one product which is the default. That product is 3... Our product, Basic Choice, is 3% less than SCE's product as the equivalent generation rate. And then on the Smart Choice, it's 1 cent more than the Basic Choice. And then the 100% is 1 and 1/2 cent more than the Basic Choice. So the rate design is staying the same throughout the course, yes.
Okay, so if we're moving from 100% to the Smart Choice, that means the rates differ then, right?
It means that right now, the municipal accounts of Irvine and those that are on the default are paying a penny and 1/2 more than the Basic Choice. In the future, if it goes to Smart Choice, that means that they'll be paying a penny more than the Basic Choice. And the Basic Choice is 3% less than SCE as the equivalent generation rate.
Right, I know I understand the rates, but I want to make it clear for our audience that might be tuning in, how does it affect them personally? So, for example, I'm a customer. I'm at 100% renewable. And now with this shift, I'm going to be transferred to the Smart Rate. So my bill will be different. It should be a little bit less than when it was 100%. Is that correct?
It will be less. It will be less, not only because we put you in Smart Choice, but over the course of this year, your generation rates have dropped by about 14%, 15%. And so it will be less, yes.
Now, is SCE experiencing the same sort of situation as well?
SCE is, in terms of the cost...
With these high rates, what are they doing with their customer rate?
SCE is mostly within the fossil fuel business. You saw earlier that they have, their product is about 35% renewable energy. We have 70% of our sales at 100% renewable energy. So we're in the market purchasing a lot of renewable energy for our customers. But currently, the generation rates, which we index ourselves off of the utility, is dropping. And we're also, our rates are also dropping because they're indexed off of the utility. Did you have any... Did you want to add to that? I don't know if you want to clarify.
Yes, I do. Mayor, to answer your question about the bill impact to our customers, just for the generation side, for residential customer, assuming they're using about 520 kilowatt hours per month, their bill will change from $68.57 to $65.97.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I have more questions, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments. Councilmember Kim.
Thank you so much. So yesterday was my last day on the OCPA Board as well, so great to see everyone here. Now, I think it's important to note the work that's being done at OCPA. And while OCPA isn't necessarily making this statement, but I'm going to make it myself. So Edison's rates, the generation rates have decreased by 7%. And I want the audience to understand this. They've increased by 7%. And I really believe that OCPA and having OCPA has been a driving factor in much of this. Because at the end of the day, competition drives prices down. And I believe that, you know, just the existence of having competition is... You know, other entities will figure out a way to cut costs. And I think if OCPA did not exist, there would be absolutely zero incentive for any investor-owned utility to drive its prices down. So I think, you know, so kudos to the founding members and the original board members who helped get Irvine. It was before I got here to have the City of Irvine not only join but be the founding member of OCPA. So I think it accomplished that. And I think the second part is reaching its sustainability goals. So, and I think that we have been able to do that. And I think even with the Smart Choice, it is still 55% renewable, and the Basic Choice would be 44% renewable. So I think these are, you know, these are good things. And, you know, I just want to thank OCPA. Thank you, you know, Mayor Khan and Councilmember Carroll for, you know, for believing in this and making this happen. And for Councilmember Trecider, when you were an activist, making this happen. So thank you all.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll go to public testimony. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. We have seven or eight requests to speak.
Okay. It's three minutes per speaker, and we'll start with those in person, followed by those via Zoom. And I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could call forward Ellen Myerson, Vicky Johnson, Harvey List, and Mona. And we'll start with Ellen Myerson.
Good evening again, Councilmembers. Ellen Myerson, where do I start with this? 100% renewable energy at cheaper rates. That's what I heard originally, and that never seemed to happen. The city's been paying more for their energy for, I'm not sure how long now, at least a year, maybe two years, than they would have had to pay if they had just been with SCE. I really don't believe anything I hear from a commodities broker. People that buy and sell power, and that's what they do. They don't really own any equipment. They don't own any of the delivery facilities that gets the power to your house. I heard a lot of double talk. 55% renewable. I'm with SCE. My rates have gone down. And I'm under 100% renewable. I'm not sure how much I'm actually getting, but I'm on their 100% renewable plan. Like I've said this before, I worked for the phone company. When they broke the phone company up, they made a bunch of little phone companies. And it was kind of the same thing. People thought they were getting competition. It was actually fake competition because those little tiny phone companies, they don't own any equipment either. They rented out and leased the equipment of Verizon and AT&amp;T, and they ran all the wires that those two companies owned, they leased. So they didn't really own anything. So if you've noticed in the phone company business, those little phone companies, they come and go all the time. Now it's the wireless ones, they come and go all the time because they don't own any equipment. They're leasing facilities from Verizon and from AT&amp;T. So OCPA is kind of the same thing. That's the way I see it. I wish we had gotten out a long time ago. If they were... It's supposed to be creating competition. I don't know how that's happening. It's supposed to be making the environment better. I haven't seen any proof that it's done anything at all for the environment. I don't think it's done absolutely anything for the environment. So I'm not really sure why the city is still in it. Thank you.
Vicky Johnson.
Hello, good evening. OCPA's default rate costs Irvine residents and businesses more than SCE. Even after this change, OCPA will cost more than SCE. The City Council has a duty to save residents' money and protect them from deceptive marketing. SCE has a community solar program that can save residents 10% on the generation rate. That's a lot better than anything OCPA offers. I urge this council to move to exit OCPA. Direct the two board members to vote to wind it down, get the bills paid, and distribute OCPA's reserves, which appear to be more than $100 million. At least downgrade Irvine to the lowest OCPA rate by default. Inform residents that they can opt out and for them to learn about the SCE Community Solar Program that will save them 10% on generation. Now, sure, OCPA could reduce the rates. Why don't they? Yesterday's OCPA agenda states that Joe Moska, the CEO, his salary was just increased to $375,000. $375,000. That salary will come out of people's electricity bills. Paying their electricity bills will pay this gentleman's salary. And that's a lot of people in Irvine who do not make $375,000. So OCPA has had a lot of questionable expenditures. Now, in Fountain Valley, OCPA sponsored a black tie ball to engrave. That was in honor of the mayor while the vote to join was before the City Council. That was to ingratiate themselves with the mayor of Fountain Valley. There was a big rush to have the second vote on November 5th. No one really understood, why are we voting on election date for joining OCPA? Well, now maybe we know, trouble was brewing. None of this was communicated to Fountain Valley, and I went to all the City Council meetings. So other cities in Orange County are at risk from OCPA's deceptive marketing and the way they target just a few City Council members. That's really the weak point of some city councils. Those people turn, and then suddenly they're more for OCPA than they are for their own residents. So please vote to at least downgrade to the lowest OCPA rate in preparation for exiting and dissolving OCPA. Thank you.
Harvey List.
As was said, I'm Harvey List, a very longtime resident of Irvine. I originally opted out of OCPA in 2022 and went to SCE and immediately applied for the 100% renewables. And my question is, I immediately got about a 5% discount for subscribing to SCE's 100% renewables, and that discount has continuously increased month by month. Until now, I'm getting a 19% discount for 100% renewables, whereas OCPA has always charged a premium. I never understood that. SCE's website says, certainly has said recently when I looked, that renewable energy is cheaper than fossil fuel energy. Yet we just heard from Mr. Moska that it's gone to 400%. I can't resolve those two issues. The other question I have is, SCE puts people on a waiting list when they subscribe to 100% renewables or anything higher than the basic renewables rate until they can get contracts, renewables contracts, to support that. Whereas OCPA has said they can put any number of people at any time on the 100% renewables. How is OCPA able to get these renewables contracts whereas SCE cannot? This has always been enormously confusing. The last thing I want to say is, we keep hearing about this 3% discount. As Joe Moska said correctly, the 3% discount on the basic rate for OCPA is only on the generation rate. The slide didn't mention the generation rate. It's very misleading. The generation rate is only 40% of the total bill, which means that the actual bill reduction is only 1.2% by going to the basic rate, not 3%, which a lot of people believe. And I've seen that on Nextdoor. Everyone seems to believe they're getting a 3% bill rate reduction, and that is absolutely not the case. It's only 1.2%. Thank you.
Mona.
I don't have any reason to trust anything that comes from OCPA. The bills did not get lower. How is this energy, this clean energy, being sent to us? I can't think of the word right now. And then all I hear about is how OCPA is... And then all I hear about is how OCPA is taking money and using it for friends and family credit cards and dinners and hotels and balls. So why isn't the rate lower? Obviously, you're making enough money for you to be able to do all these things on the side. Why aren't the ratepayers getting that money back? Why is it being spent frivolously? So that's all I have to say right now. But I also wanted to say, Mayor Khan, it's almost the end. We love you.
Sarah, you have 90 seconds.
Since Alan Meyerson mentioned phone company, I do agree competition is healthy in many areas and industries. For example, Mint Mobile came in. Now it's a competition. Even though they use T-Mobile's lines, you can get about, you know, 60% cheaper phone service. But is that what I'm seeing with the OCPA? No. So OCPA has a lot to prove that it's not going to run in corrupt way, that residents don't have to hear about $3,800 dinner bill, Fountain Valley mayor getting $1,500 mayor ball funding, campaign funding. Essentially, we don't want to pay for someone's $580 coffee bill. I mean, nothing justifies that. How does that help us get lower rate? I have no clue. But this is only one of like probably 400 lists of crazy expenditures that I've seen. And unless you can fix the board members who are completely out of control using it like their personal credit card, you have no merit yet. I do believe good competition is good, but OCPA hasn't proven a single thing at all. But thank you, Mayor Khan. I will miss you.
Our next speaker is Yui Saito. Yui, you may unmute your mic.
Hello, my name is Yui Saito, Stonegate, Stonegate resident. I would like to express my gratitude to the city of Irvine for its involvement with the OCPA, which allowed us to source our energy from cleaner alternatives rather than from companies that pollute our environment. With the high cost of housing, living in an apartment is my only option and making it impractical for me to invest in solar panels. However, the city's commitment to providing renewable energy to all residents is a significant benefit and aligns with my values. The OCPA not only offers cleaner energy, but also provides it at a more affordable rate, which is crucial for residents like me. This initiative reflects Irvine's dedication to sustainability and environmental responsibility, which are important to our community. It is one of the key reasons I love about living, living in Irvine. Thank you for making renewable energy accessible to everyone and for fostering a community that uses a cleaner future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kyler Chin. Kyler, you may unmute your mic.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
People, good evening. My name is Kyler Chin. I'm the Sunrise Member, which is a nationwide movement to help push forward a good union jobs and a renewable energy future. People here are essentially bootlicking a for-profit utility company, which is SCE, who their only objective is paying its shareholders, while OCPA invests in local solar and renewable energy projects. Harvey List is wrong. OCPA takes months and years to procure contracts. It's electricity just like SCE with power procurements. And clean energy is much cheaper when you can pay a bunch of wind and solar farms where land is plentiful, such as Palm Springs, and it scales very well. It's not practical to climb every single household roof in the city of Irvine and buy solar panels for them and put it up. That's just not how the grid works. It works off of large-scale inertia. I, for one, will probably still be here in 2070, and it's deeply upsetting that we are considering raising our carbon emissions. The IPCC clock is winding down rapidly. Irvine still has very little commitments to its climate goals, and I'm deeply disappointed to see even a consideration of rollbacks of our environmental progress. Environmental advocates in 2022, from a coalition of nonprofits, spent a lot of time advocating for 100% renewable power. So I'm deeply upset that this is even being considered. And yes, OCPA does need more financial transparency, but I am very hopeful for the future because of OCPA, and I would hopefully like to see the OCPA still be in shape when, when I'm old. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Phelps. Jim, you may unmute your mic. You have 90 seconds.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
So I got two points that I want to cover with you this evening. First of all, for the record, I'm a retired power contractor and utility rate analyst. And I've spent the last five or six years working with the California Energy Commission on various energy reporting legislation and implementing it. Talking with the OCPA is transparency. And it sounds great, but it has not delivered any transparency to a point where you're able to actually tell what's what. That shows up in your current plans. You're going to do a temporary opt-down, smart choice. 40% of that is carbon-free. I don't know if any of you are aware or not, but carbon-free has no digital tracking mechanism to tell how much energy is actually produced or where it was sold. So that opens up the opportunities for double, triple, 10x sales of the same energy. There's no way to tell. So what's going to happen is people who buy carbon-free energy in this market are going to end up with system power that's relabeled as large hydro or nuclear. I don't think that's what you want. You want to know what the energy you're getting. You can't tell.
Let me interrupt for a moment.
So we'll get back to this, this in Irvine's.
Carl, don't, don't cut him off at 90 seconds.
Okay.
Keep going, Mr. Phelps.
Mr. Phelps, you may unmute your mic. Mr. Phelps, can you hear us? Vice Mayor, he's on, but his mic is still muted.
We'll see if he can come back.
We'll leave him in the queue. We'll try him again. Our next speaker is telephone number 347. 347, you may unmute your mic.
Yes, can you please play my video, and then I'll speak to it after if I have time. I'd like to say a few words about city councilperson Joe Moska and his current campaign for reelection. Please don't let this candidate fool you. He lied shamelessly to his supporters, including me, four years ago to secure his council seat. The very foundation of his political career has been built entirely on falsehoods. Mr. Moska has done nothing to protect or fight for the rights and interests of Sierra Madre residents. Then he betrayed that pledge almost immediately upon taking his seat. Do not appoint Joe Moska to serve as our mayor for the next 12 months. Tradition and fairness cannot ever be judicially used as an argument to either reward Mr. Moska for his repeated betrayal of this community's best interests or to submit this community to such an egregious insult. Thank you. Mr. Moska, you know, just a minute, Mr. Moska, let me say something. Mr. Moska, if you would stop for a moment. Mr. Moska, you're out of order.
I, I trust that people have, have seen me for the last four years and know, you know, what I've done the last four years, so not anybody else.
Mr. Moska, if you decide to respond to public comment again, I will have to ask the chief to remove you from the chamber.
Can we ask for the advice of the city attorney as to whether I can respond to who verbally attacks me in the city council meeting? And if you want to ask for input from the city attorney, I'm sure.
I don't need input from the city attorney. This is my meeting, and I am the mayor, and you are consistently out of order, as you have been several times over the last several meetings. I will not tolerate you being out of order. And if you decide to blurt anything out again at another public comment, then I will have you removed. Period.
What the county parties will do is they'll get into office, they'll get on these boards, and then especially if there's a lot of money coming through the agencies, like with OCPA, there's a lot of money coming through and other things, they'll start scheming off that money by giving contracts to their friends. So their friends will start a business. It's just them, they're a consultant. They'll give them $100,000 a year or so. It's just, and then it's this favor system where if someone's giving you $100,000, then you help them out with their campaign and you make sure that they're appointed to the right. It's very, very hard to break into that and stop that. And so they were saying that it seems like this might be happening at OCPA.
Okay, and so these are the people that we're supposed to trust. Anyway, I look forward to hearing more from Jim Phelps. Please try to get him back on the line. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, he did, Mr. Phelps did drop out of the queue.
Thank you.
And that is all the speakers. Mayor?
Thank you. I'll turn it back over to your councilmember, Tracider.
Okay, thank you very much. So I appreciate the presentation from the OCPA staff. Thank you so much. I, yeah, normally I would not want to opt folks down from 100%. That's very important to me. I always stood by that. The other alternative is to raise rates for our customers, and I do not want to do that in this atmosphere right now. Folks are having hard times financially, and I want to respect that. I will say, I, I understand Mr. Chin's concern about not releasing more greenhouse gases, but we are making up the difference between the renewable energy that we're not purchasing by instead purchasing carbon-free energy, so this will not contribute to climate change. And so I think that this is a good temporary solution, and then hopefully we'll be able to bring it back up after a couple of years. Yeah, I really wish I could control the energy market, but I, I do not. I'd not be here if I, if I could. Thanks.
When, when was OCPA made aware that, you know, we would need some, a change like this? At what point? I mean, if our board members don't know, then absolutely, if I could get OCPA members to speak up.
Yes, I'd love to have an answer. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor. So for the last couple of years, we have been tracking the high cost of renewable energy and coming up with a mitigation plan. Over the last year, we've been meeting with our board members who are participating in our oversight committee. We have a risk oversight committee at OCPA. For the last year, we've been sharing and tracking the progress with the renewable energy costs. And at, in September, the chair brought that to the attention of the board of directors and formed an ad hoc committee. And that's when we basically had further discussions with the board of directors.
In order for us to make sure that we're not in this similar situation, what are some of the recommendations that, that you're proposing so that we're not in this? Because I mean, I, I can understand this is going to be fluctuating. There's going to be high times and low times. I know one of the things that we did when we were on the board is that we purchased for a few years ahead to make sure that, you know, the rates would be stable. I just want to hear from OCPA, what are you guys doing moving forward so that we're not in this situation?
Good question. So let me just mention one thing that we're doing, and then I'll turn it over to our CFO to talk about the, the broader mitigation plan that we have effectuated and put in place. And so one thing that, that we've been doing is essentially moving from short-term transactions, moving from being heavily exposed to the short-term and day-ahead market for, for energy, moving to more long, Orange County Power Authority, as it's, as progressing and maturing, it has been very successful in bringing on more long-term contracts. In fact, one of the contracts was mentioned today that we just mentioned, that we just entered into a 14-year contract for renewable, renewable energy, stable, affordable prices, bucket one, PCC one renewable energy. So that's the, that's the key, is really making sure that we're, we're working with our state partners, these projects that are slowed down or delayed because of interconnection issues, project delays, that we're working on those issues as the state to make sure those projects are getting through the queue with the CAISO, and we're entering into more long-term contracts. And as we're maturing, the success is, there's momentum in terms of how much, how many more contracts that we're entering into. Let me turn over to our CFO for more on the mitigation plan.
The other mitigation plan that we have is we already moved all of our collateral posting from letter of credits to cash posting. You know, it will save us a lot of financing costs and then also will help us to mitigate our revenue requirements for 2025. And then besides that one, the mitigation plan that we have is we defer $45 million from our reserve from last fiscal year to this fiscal year to balance the revenue budget for this fiscal year. And then as I shared with you guys, that it is important for us to maintain 30% or higher reserve because we need to make sure that our long-term financing planning, as well as the risk mitigation, is implemented. And then this financial buffer actually secures energy at a competitive price, provides stable rates as well as reliable, affordable renewable energies to our customers.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I just want to reiterate to, to again, our, our residents here and our businesses, you know, I, I fully support OCPA. I, I believe in the CCA concept, and I think that's important for us to have in this region. You know, and, and it's, it's new. We're not established like the other CCAs throughout California are. We're newer, we're trying to get to a point where we are more stable. But I think it's very important for us to, and it was brought up by a lot of people, to be transparent. And if our board members that sit on OCPA knew about this in September, it's kind of frustrating that it was brought forward now. I, I mean, you know, we have announcements at every council meeting, and we get updates on OCPA and other boards that folks sit on, but no one brought up this issue since September. And, and that's an issue. And I, I think, you know, it's frustrating. I can hear the frustration residents' voices. And I want to make sure, thank you. I want to make sure that, you know, when things like this happen, when we're talking about being transparent, we've got to know about it so that we are not shocked at the last minute to see an item on the agenda and try to figure out what's going on and how we're going to react to it, that we could have maybe done a better job since September of educating the community, of educating ourselves so that we were not in this pickle right now, you know, on the last meeting of this council. And I don't put that on you guys, I put that on our board members. It's, it's unfortunate that they, they didn't share this information in a timely manner. But I, I do think that, you know, I'm glad that there's a plan forward so that we're not in this position again. And then I want to really share with our, our residents and our businesses here that are with OCPA, that, you know, more communication is better, and that's what they deserve. And then I would love to see that coming out of OCPA even more so. I know you guys are doing it, but even more is, is going to be expected because the more people know, the more comfortable they are, the, the better they'll feel about the decisions that are being made on their behalf. And I think that's the, the path forward that we need to take. So thank you. Vice Mayor Agren.
Thank you, Mayor. Where to begin? Let's go back to basics, touching on what you were just speaking about, Mayor. People have been told, year after year, OCPA means greener, cheaper, and full transparency. One, two, three, three strikes. Three promises, three promises broken. Kyler Chin, when he called in, said, well, why don't you just stay at 100%? Mayor, could, could they please come forward, maybe answer a question or two?
Sure.
He said, we should stay at 100%. What would happen if we stayed at 100%?
So we were mentioning earlier, Councilmember, Vice Mayor, that the task that we were given by the OCPA Board is to balance the two very important goals of affordability and climate action goals. We understand the very important climate action goals of the City of Irvine within your plan, and which gave rise to OCPA. And so that's why we basically came up with the ideal scenario, which was us to not have to increase the rates and keep those as affordable as possible, and then put you in a product, a default product, right? Which would be 55% renewable energy, equivalent, qualified renewable energy, plus 40% carbon-free. So that's 95% carbon-free resources that would be coming to you. But your residents would also have access to the basic choice, which is 3% less. It is less, or 100%.
I'm going to interrupt you if I could, please. What would happen if we stayed at 100%?
If you stayed, if the default for Irvine stayed at 100%, then we would have to raise rates.
How much would you have to raise them?
First of all, if we are not going to change any procurement strategy, basically a status quo scenario that we have given to our board, our reserve level will drop to 15%. As I share with you guys, that our board approved our reserve policy between 30% to 50% to serve as the buffer, to buffer all the financial challenges that we just discussed. But to answer your other question about we need to increase rates would be for the smart choice, we need to increase the adder to 2 cents, and then we need to increase the adder for 100% renewable choice from 1.5 cents to 3 cents.
So that's double?
It's not double. If we do that, the impact would be... If we change smart choice from 1 cent adder to 2 cents adder, it will represent 8% rate increase. If we change 100% renewable choice from 1.5 cents adder to 3 cents adder, it represents 12% rate increase. So it's not...
I've heard that there's speculation that what the resident pays could double, could double in these volatile markets and so forth. No?
It is not the fact.
Not the fact, all right? Apparently, Mr. Chi, you have the wrong information.
In the discussions that we've had with Mr. Mosca, it appeared, he never confirmed exactly what the rate would adjust to, but it was indicated rates could potentially have to double or triple.
Double or triple. That's the information.
There is no double, but I can see how one could logically look at, again, there's a distinction between the OCPA rate design. We are indexing ourselves off the utility. We set a rate design, and I guess you're the only person that hasn't served in the Board of Directors of OCPA, but we have a rate design that says that with respect to the utility, for the year of 2024, right? We will be 3% less on our basic choice as to the equivalent generation rate, will be one penny more as the smart choice, and then one and a half pennies more on the smart choice. I guess you could look at that rate design and say, okay, if the status quo will mean that it's 2% on the smart choice, 2 cents more than the basic choice, and 3 cents more on the 100%, that's doubling. But that's a rate design, so you can't just add those and say, oh, 1 and 1/2 is now...
So what you told the city manager is not true? He has bad information?
I think there's maybe misunderstanding. If you'd basically...
Clarify it for me, because it's pretty important. It's a big difference.
So as the CFO just pointed out, there is no doubling of any rates. And besides the fact that the OCPA Board of Directors is not interested in changing the rates, what we're doing with power strategy so that the rates don't have to be adjusted, but there is no doubling of any rates. There is a change with respect to the rate design, but a change in the rate design doesn't mean a doubling of the rates. It means the impact that the CFO just mentioned.
Vice Mayor, your time is up.
Let me just ask one last question, if I might, Mayor, then I'd like another, we'll go another round. Why shouldn't we go down to the basic rate right now? Right now?
Also, I think that's a choice...
The City of Irvine and its, in its purchase of, as a customer, the City of Irvine and the residents, why shouldn't we go down to the basic rate right now?
So again, I think the reason why we came up with the ideal scenario, and why we believe it's the ideal, and why the Board of Directors of OCPA believes it's the ideal, is because it basically balances the twin very important goals of affordability and climate action goals. Your climate action, right now, you're 100%. Just as the speaker said, that premium of 100% is so very important, and your climate action plan is built on that. So what we've done is made a small adjustment. So for '25 and '26, it goes from 55 to, and '60 in 2026, with 40% carbon-free elements resources there. And it gets you back to 100% in 2027. Going down to basic choice is your decision, but it would be much more than a small shift. It would be a detour that's much harder to get back to. So the ideal scenario basically brings, balances the affordability, and doesn't bring you too too far afield of your climate action plan.
Mayor, I'll defer to others, and if I could reserve five minutes for another round, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Teseeder.
Yeah, thank you. I think I understand, I've been talking with Mr. Mosca and Mr. Chi several times the last, and I think I understand where the misunderstanding was. So I think probably Mr. Mosca was talking about the adder doubling. And then I can imagine Mr. Chi, hearing that, would think that the actual, the amount that we would pay would double. That's not the case. So the adder is like, let's say, just for simplicity's sake, SoCal Edison charges $1 per kilowatt hour. For the 100% renewable rate, then, we would have $1 plus 1.5 cents per kilowatt hour. So if we had, if we didn't make a change here, we might need to double that adder, so it'd be $1.3, right? So we're not doubling the amount, we're not doubling it to 2. We're maybe increasing it $1.3 instead of $1.15. Okay. In terms of the timing, of course, absolutely, I'm a board member, and the buck stops here, certainly. I will say that I think maybe, again, there was a miss, there is a disconnect between what Mr. Mosca said and maybe what was assumed. So in September, yes, the Chair came to our board meeting and said, we need to establish a subcommittee for power procurement. And so then he appointed me and him on that subcommittee. That was the extent of the information given in September. November 5th or 9th, I forget the exact date, that was when I met a member of the subcommittee and found out about the current situation. Then I hurried and agendized it as soon as I could. Now, again, the buck stops here. So I will make sure from now on that I am kept aware of all these developments as they happen. I was on the Risk Assessment Committee last year, and by the time I finished, we were in good shape. But I wasn't on the committee this year, and so going to Brown Act requirements, I was not given that information. But entirely, I take responsibility for it fully. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Agron.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Mosca, again, please. What percent of renewable energy is actually delivered to Irvine homes now? Actually delivered, not purchased, delivered?
See, we don't deliver electricity to people's homes. Southern California Edison is the utility, they own the poles and wires, and they control the electricity that goes to homes. What we do is we purchase energy on the market, and we deliver that to the grid, and CAISO manages the grid.
So what percent are we getting? Somebody who is in OCPA, did not opt out, and the next-door neighbor who did opt out, what percent of renewable is coming into those neighboring homes?
So the percentage that the customer purchases, we purchase on behalf of that customer, and that energy is delivered to the grid.
But they get precisely the same electricity, don't they?
They, sorry, they get precisely the same energy?
The same electricity.
So we're talking about, so OC, Orange County Power Authority purchases the requisite amount of energy that a customer desires to have purchased on their behalf, and that energy is then delivered to the grid, and the utility delivers that energy to the, through the poles and wires to people's homes?
And the... I mean, the truth is, it's what, 38% renewable, 40%, 44% that is actually delivered?
On the grid.
Actually delivered.
So at different points in time, right now, maybe it's about 40% renewable energy, it could be about 80, 85% renewable energy on the grid?
All right.
But the more, but I think, Vice Mayor, the reason the program was started was that you would displace the amount of, we purchase about 2,700 gigawatts of, gigawatt hours of renewable energy on an annual basis. That means that instead of purchasing 2,700 gigawatts of fossil fuel, oil, gas, we're purchasing wind, solar, geothermal, other renewable clean energy sources, and putting that onto the grid. And it's also inducing even higher demand for more renewable energy that's being put on the grid. Because of the CCAs across the state of California, there's more clean energy projects in the state of California, there's more clean energy on the grid, it is increasing every day.
What clean energy projects have you delivered to the City of Irvine?
So in the short period of time that Orange County Power Authority has been in place, we've signed one PPA for a long-term project that's being built in Riverside, and that would deliver clean energy to the grid. And we're also, right now, we had a RFP for long-term and midterm renewable energy resources that went out mid-year this year. And we're now working, we shortlist about four of those projects, and we're working through negotiations on those projects. And I'm very hopeful that a couple of those projects will make it through. Louis, I can call up my Director of Power Resources that may be able to give a little bit more clarity.
Good evening, again, Louis Singh here. And projects is what's going to bring us stable rates and also the cost certainty. And that will bring more renewable online. And as Mr. Mosca has succinctly mentioned, is the overall grid that CAISO controls. You're absolutely correct, Mr. Agron, that the, Member Agron, that the electricity is controlled by a California independent system operator. And all the electricity that gets delivered into the grid gets delivered to every customer. So whether it's renewable or not, it gets delivered into it. However, the difference is with CCA is that 73% of accounts, of customers of OCPA, was able to receive 100% of the renewable energy that OCPA purchased, delivered into the grid. So without that, it would have been, you're absolutely correct, 40%, because that would be the minimum requirement the state requires. So that increase between 170,000-plus customers of OCPA that received over 86% of renewable energy versus the 40%, so the actual energy, the 27 gigawatt hours that Mr. Mosca mentioned, it is significant if you multiply percentages I just mentioned.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, your time is up.
I'm just going to say, Mayor, I have more questions. It's just, I find it a shame that this critically important subject is being discussed here, what is it, 10 o'clock at night, pushing, yes, pushing toward 10 o'clock. I think maybe there are three citizens here, or not staff of OCPA, or our own staff, or whatever. This is so important, I don't know where this is going to go tonight. But in seeking yet another round of questions, I just want to share with you, my feeling is we're seeing the beginning of the end right now. We're seeing the beginning of the end of OCPA. And the only question in my mind is, and how much will it cost us, or will we be able to extricate ourselves in a way that doesn't inflict further damage to Irvine ratepayers? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. A couple other questions. There are times when, you know, there's several JPAs that we all sit on the boards of, and you have the idea of the JPA and its success, and then we also have the responsibility of the city and its success. So for us to move to the smart tier, is it beneficial for us as a city to do that? Or is it beneficial for OCPA for us to do that?
I would say that it's beneficial for both OCPA and for the City of Irvine. And, I mean, Irvine is our biggest and most important member within OCPA. And so absolutely, when we're looking at strategies and putting together plans, we're thinking about Irvine, thinking about the climate action plan that you have. We don't take lightly the fact that we would basically shift from the 100%. This is something that's very important, took some time to think about and come up with. And, you know, the plan that we put together, a temporary one, which would preserve the options for folks like your caller, Earl, to stay at 100%, they can go back to 100%. What we're talking about is just changing the default, temporarily changing the default for those that are now at 100%, they'd be at the 55%, and then the 60% for 2026, and then back to 100% in 2027. So I do believe that this is the best choice for Irvine right now. It ensures that the rate design stays in place, which means affordability for your customers, for our customers. If somebody wants to go down to basic choice, get more renewable energy at a lesser cost, they can do that. If they want to pay a premium and go up to 100%, and it's, you know, a penny and a half more than the basic choice, they can go up to 100%. Or if they stay at the smart choice, they'll get 55% plus 40% carbon-free at a penny, which is less than they're paying today.
So is it more beneficial for the city to go to smart choice or the basic?
I would say smart choice. This is the proposal that the staff, and I stand behind that staff proposal, that we made to the Board of Directors. I think it's the best, I think it's a balance between the affordability and the climate action goals that the city has.
And for other cities that are members, you know, members of OCPA, how are they shifting? Or are they shifting?
So Fullerton is currently at smart choice, so there's no shifting there, and we're working with Buena Park now.
Buena Park is at 100, or?
Buena Park is at 100.
And what are you recommending for Buena Park?
The same thing, smart choice.
Smart choice for them as well? Okay. All right. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Agron, if you don't mind, I'm going to go with Councilmember Teseeder and Carolyn come back to you.
Sure.
Councilmember Teseeder.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that that's the salient question, is whether this is good for our residents or not. And I guess, yeah, it's up to the council to decide, of course. My perspective is that it would be good for our residents because they would not have to deal with increases in their costs for electricity. Again, I don't want to do that to them right now. I'd rather they were spared that, in fact, even get a little bit of a discount while still maintaining our environmental goals. I also have noted the discussion about, you know, whether electrons that come into our homes come from renewable energy or fossil fuels. And I understand that that has, messaging has been going around quite a bit. I will say that whenever I, you know, turn on my lights, I'm not thinking to myself, yes, these are extra special renewable energy electrons that will do something special for my home. It's that... It's that I'm glad that we didn't make these electrons. And I think the, you know, a bit of a metaphor for this is, it's like a bank. So let's say 10 years ago, I took a stack of $1 bills into my bank and I knew all the serial numbers for those bills and I deposited into my account at the bank. And then say tomorrow, I want to go out to the bank and withdraw $100. I'm not going to say, you got to give me exactly those same dollar bills or it's not my money. You know, they're going to give me that $100 and that is my money because it was deposited that way. The same thing with this. So if we have renewable energy being deposited to the grid and then we draw that out, that is our renewable energy that we have purchased, that the customers have purchased. And I know that many residents of Irvine really value that because they have repeatedly said that, there was a lot of activism to start this up, and so that is why I support it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carol.
Great, thank you, Mayor. If you guys, Mr. Moska or Ms. Law, if you guys want to come, I just have a couple of clarifying questions. In terms of, you know, you had mentioned that we're the largest load and do you know approximately what percent of the load is, of OCPA is Irvine?
60%.
60%. So, okay, so of all the electric that you guys are doing is us, okay. And when you say carbon free?
Mostly large hydro.
Okay, but is it nuclear energy?
There is some nuclear. So the, the state of California, when they, the state of California, when they basically extended the, the life of Diablo up north, they forced all ratepayers to take those nuclear attributes. So whether we pay for it or not, we still basically, I'm, I'm sorry, whether we take it or not, we still pay for it. So it, yes, there's some nuclear there as well.
There's nuclear energy, okay. Because I know that for some people, that's not considered acceptable from an environmental perspective.
Right.
But, but I, but I remember the, the, the carbon free will include nuclear and my question is, is OCPA purchasing nuclear energy, answer is you are, correct?
So only because the state of California forces all load serving entities?
I know, but are you buying, I'm just asking if you're buying nuclear energy right now with that?
We are.
With our money, thank you. How much was the Riverside project?
How much was the Riverside?
Yeah, what did you spend on that?
Over the lifetime of the PPA?
I, I don't, I don't have any, what did you pay, what have you spent so far in Riverside? I don't know.
Could you, could you explain a little bit more when you say what, what have we paid for?
You said you purchased some kind of a renewable project in Riverside or you're greenfielding it or something?
So one of our first long-term PPAs is for Grace Orchard. It's a, a new build happening in, in western portion of Riverside and that project has a completion date of around 2027.
What have you committed to spend or what have you spent so far and what are you committing to spend?
We haven't spent anything yet because we haven't gotten any deliveries. But in terms of the, the contract, do you have a, an estimate?
Due to the fact that this market sensitive information, the board members can, can be informed of the pricing, CPUC, this is CPUC regulation, the pricing of the energy is market sensitive, so we cannot discuss pricing in a public forum. It is confidential. When we submit a pricing or the contracts to CPUC and CEC, they're all redacted.
Okay, so what, what is?
So what I can assure you.
When, when, when the word Riverside is used, what does that mean? I know that, I know what a PPA is, I'm aware of those.
The location.
How is it related to Riverside?
So, so the location is in western side, western part of San, Riverside County.
Okay. Was there opportunity to do something that was a project that could have benefited, let's say, the city of Irvine versus investing in something that's going to employ people in Riverside County somewhere else?
So absolutely. So again, the, on the, if I may, explained on a transmission, a high voltage side, all of the electricity delivered to each individual homes or commercial, it's at a certain voltage, usually 480 volts or 120 volts. Or some are a little higher. But these projects are delivered at a very high transmission voltage. So there are 230,000 volts or 500,000 volts. So the, the electricity actually gets transmitted into stations that directly connect into the grid. And these grids are interconnected through substations, subtransmission stations, that's what they're called. And Irvine does benefit, and just like every other city, with the incumbent utilities substations, those electricity gets delivered to and transformed down to the voltage that can be used.
Right, but it sounds like it, it'll be going towards employing to do this work.
It, it, it goes into the grid. What I'm trying to say is that the 230,000 volts and 500,000 volts transmission line actually comes into the cities. They're underground, they're overhead, depending on where the locations are. But again, we're talking about working with City Irvine and other, other cities within OCPA to do local generation projects. And that's one of our strategic goals for, based on our board approval from 423, 24 fiscal year.
When you say local gener, I'm running out of time, so, excuse me. When you say local generation, local to what, Riverside County?
No, local City Irvine, Great Park. We're talking to staff at this point regarding the potential doing carports. We're talking megawatts, we're not talking about kilowatts, we're talking a thousand times more than what a single family home would have. And those are the projects we're going to, is going to directly benefit City Irvine.
Okay.
So, so, thank you. Councilmember, just, just to also point out, there's a distinction between, and one of your callers is talking about that, this, that there's a distinction between the utility scale generation and, and local generation. And certainly OCPA is, is very much focused on, on local generation as well. We just basically are putting the finishing touches on our feed-in tariff program, private developers to come to the table and help us build local generation for resiliency, reliability, local jobs, absolutely. But also when you look at 2,700 gigawatts of, of energy needs, it can't be met with just, as the caller said, rooftop solar, local generation, because we just don't have enough space. And so when you're talking about the type of 90 megawatts of, of solar and 30 megawatt, paired with 30 megawatts of, of energy storage, that's something that's going to be, need a lot of land, a lot of space. And so that's a utility scale project out in the, the county of Riverside, which is a brand-new clean energy project that, that but for OCPA would not be coming online. So that was my point with that. But we are absolutely focused on local generation.
No, thank you. I, I might have some more questions, but yeah, thank you, I'm out of time. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Agron.
Thank you, Mr. Moska. Thank you. I think I know the answer to this question. I've read a little about it, but I'd be interested in your answer. If so much in the way of renewables is surging to market, coming to market, why is the price spiking?
It's a good question and Louis, I don't know if you have some thoughts, but I would say that from my perspective, working with CEOs of other load serving entities, as, as the CEO of Orange County Power Authority, I do represent our CCA on the board of Cal CCA, which is the Association of all 25 CCAs throughout the state of California. And I would say that, that one of the things that we're seeing is a backlog of projects. The queue is, is, is very thick and longer than we've ever seen before. And there's a lot of different reasons for that. I would say locally, we've experienced still some supply chain disruption. We've witnessed that and felt that with our projects where, you know, there are not enough circuit breakers, there's not enough equipment to, to build out some of these projects. But I think throughout the state of California, what we're witnessing is just the explosion of, of many clean energy projects trying to come online, good projects trying to make it through the queue, interconnection issues that are, are bogging the state down from some of these projects making their way through the queue. And also at the same time, you know, the state is basically discussing affordability. And there's a lot of need for upgrades to the distribution and the transmission system and how is that going to be paid for, how is that going to happen? And some of these good projects can't get done if we're not basically building higher capacity on these transmission lines and repairing the, the distribution lines that need repair.
I've read that tremendous amounts of this renewable energy, solar, being shipped to Nevada and to Arizona. Is that the case?
That renewable energy is being shipped?
Yeah.
So it's not, no, it's not?
It's being dumped, it's being dumped elsewhere.
So, so I think he's, you're, you may, you may be talking about the fact that, that at certain points in time, that we're producing a whole lot of solar, electricity vis-à-vis solar and there's curtailments on that. One of the things that, that Louis can talk about in terms of our procurement, and we, I just mentioned with the Grace Orchard project, is certainly that when we are now looking at entering into deals, contracts, we're thinking about the curtailment risks and we're also looking at pairing any solar with storage as well, so that, and also long duration storage, so that we, we have the capacity of storing those electrons, that electricity, and using it to meet the demands of our customers. Did you want to add anything to that?
And that's a very good question, very insightful question. And the state has been dealing with the interconnection and as we increase the amount of renewable energy, which is state mandate. So we were at 33% and then we're going to have to be at 60% by 2030. So within 10-year period, we're almost doubling the renewable. In order to increase the renewables, solar generate pretty much the same time from day in, day out, depending on the season. However, in order to effectuate that solar during the nighttime, the energy storage needs to be increased. And CAISO has been seeing a significant increase of over six gigawatts times four hours of storage installed into the system. And that will significantly reduce in the future, near future hopefully, by 2030 to over 10,000 megawatts or 10 gigawatts of storage. So the amount of, the shifting of the renewables into other states, I think that's what you are leading to regarding the renewable overgeneration.
Mayor, I don't know where we're going to go from here, but I'm, I'm kind of done for now. I've got a few ideas, but want to give others a chance to conclude.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Carol?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple more, Mr. Moska, if you don't mind, just a couple more clarifying questions. In terms of reserves, what, what are your reserve balances at this point, approximately?
So part of the mitigation plan, CFO Tiffany Law is going to respond to that, part of the mitigation plan was that we just defer revenue from one fiscal year to this fiscal year of about $45 million.
Yeah, what, what do you have on hand?
Right now, the remaining balance is $45 million.
So right now, as we speak, you have $45 million on reserve?
Total is $90 million and then we will defer $45 million to this fiscal year.
Okay, so can you just explain what you mean by that? Sorry. Do you have 90 million in the bank?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so you have $90 million. We, and Mr. Moska, you know, I've asked for this previously and I don't want to put you on the spot, I imagine you would, that this question would come up when you, this request, is we as a city of Irvine, as you know, we have about $7.5 million on loan to the Orange County Power Authority to start this thing. I think there's, you know, I'll speak for myself, I mean, there's some, there's some discontent in the sense that, to me, ratepayers, 60% of which your ratepayers are, are my residents, our residents here, plus the seven and a half million of taxpayer dollars we put up to start the thing. And I know you need to operate your business, but, you know, thousands of dollars going to other cities like Fullerton and, you know, just traditionally always kind of got to me. And it wasn't because of anyone, the two of you or your entire staff, it's just that the construct of the thing was such that none of the other cities put a single dollar up to get this thing moving. So to make your request to me, as you sit on $90 million, seven and a half million of which is, is ours, is hard to hear. And I would just ask you, and if you're not ready to answer, this is just, just airing it out in a public forum, right? We don't have any Brown Act issues. It probably, I would consider getting to where you need to go on the request, which to me undermines everything we worked on to get to this place, and I know you recognize that. The whole thing was predicated, the Climate Action Plan, everything we've done is predicated on 100% renewable, the same 100% renewable that I'm currently paying the OCPA, you know, in our, in my home. But could that be part of a, a, a agreement that we get our money repaid so I can feel a little better about this from my perspective? Because we get people coming here, public speakers that are talking about all the money, that it's all transparent, so it goes out to these environmental nonprofits and it goes to the Fullerton so-and-so street fair and, you know, on and on. And who knows how much was spent on getting Fountain Valley and, and, you know, and, and we sit here, seven and a half million down and you're sitting on $90 million. And I'm just wondering if part of this whole project had you considered or that are returning our money to us as part of this? We could talk about it another time if you're not ready, I'm not trying to.
But I would just clarify that in terms of our sponsorship guidelines and our budget, that we do try and succeed at aligning our spending in accordance with the throughput. So while we do have sponsorships in other cities, if your throughput is 60%, that's likely where you would find the sponsorship dollars being spent too.
Are you asking, I only have a certain amount of time, thank you, but.
So 60% of that.
Did you ask Fountain Valley to spend any money upfront to become part of this organization?
So, no, no, there are no upfront costs for any member, any save.
Well, there was for us. My only point is, right, that's the problem. Seven and a half million dollars, as you can tell, I have a bit of buyer's remorse on that.
Right, so the way that you set it up originally was that you had a financial plan that said that that, that loan would be paid off at the end of '26. And so that's the plan right now. The CEO of Orange County Power Authority cannot authorize a, a payment of that in, in advance of that amortization schedule, especially with a subordination agreement in place. But if you ask your board members to come to the Board of Directors of OCPA and make that request and they have a discussion with their board, their colleagues, then that could be advanced. But that, that's something that the Board of Directors of OCPA would have to decide. It also, the fact that you have two seats on the Board of Directors of OCPA.
Yeah, I mean, it could go to zero seats. I just, for me, I think I'd like to have our money paid back.
So what I would say is that, 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 that I can't, I can't change it, I can't change it. It's beyond my authority.
You can change it, but part, part of the project is the whole thing that was also predicated on City of Irvine meeting these goals and, and, you know.
Councilmember Carol, your time is up.
Yeah, thank you, if I finish my, the ballyhoo of being able to kind of broadcast all these goals that we were meeting, including being 100%. So for me, I would say that, and I think I could be done too, it's just that our city manager is telling us it was going to be a double, perhaps tripling. You're saying it's, it's 12% or so. It feels like, I, I don't really know, this doesn't seem like there's enough information, at least for me, to kind of take this drastic step, which is effectively a reversal of what hundreds of people came here and, and asked that we do. So it's, it sounds like you've known about it since September. We're hearing about it now. And I was just wondering if, you know, I, I'm, I'm hoping you can have a different answer than the same answer you gave me last time, which is there's a subordination agreement. Because, you know, if you could work out, if you have $90 million, you can get some of our money returned by working it out with the bank in some way. I would feel a lot better about the fact that, you know, so many of these dollars just kind of sit and get pushed to these other cities, none of which put a dollar in to start the thing. I understand that you're not responsible for that.
I can't pre, I can't change the, the, the agreement that's had between the city of Irvine and, and OCPA.
Oh, no, the board can, I understand that, the board can direct you to do it.
The Board of Directors can, can, can direct me to do that.
Sure.
Yes, absolutely. I can't do it unilaterally.
No, no, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to, I was saying if you were open to the, the idea of it. Staff makes recommendations.
I am absolutely, I am open to if my, if the OCPA Board of Directors directs me to, to inquire in terms of paying this off, I would, I would do what the OCPA Board of Directors ask. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So with that, I mean, I would recommend our board members to go back to the OCPA board and request that the city of Irvine be repaid, especially as more cities are coming in and they're not having to pay anything to join OCPA. I think would make a lot of people more comfortable knowing that we were paid our investment back. But I wanted to ask you something. You mentioned something about 60% of the scholarship, oh, what is it, sponsorship dollars go to Irvine? Is that what I heard? I'm sorry.
So, so it, it is what you heard. So we have a sponsorship guidelines and essentially how we basically would spend our sponsorship dollars, which, which is roughly about $100,000 a year, it's not a whole lot. But how we divvy that up is based on a whole bunch of different values and factors, right? But we do keep our, our eye on the throughput. Whenever we're designing programs, projects, or any sponsorship guidelines or sponsorships, we do keep an eye on. we do keep an eye on the throughput of the individual communities. And so 60%, if 60% is the throughput, that's what we would try to match in terms of sponsorships. But you're very active in Irvine. There's a lot of events that are going on. It's our largest member agency. We're always trying to stay as visible as possible. And so we are very active with all the nonprofits, all the various organizations. We're at every festival, at every event in Irvine.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Treceder?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I am happy to, if I am on the board next year, I'm happy to go to the board and ask to have our loan repaid and to advocate for that. So, good to hear that. So I would like to make a, the motion is that we do the following with respect to OCPA. First, that we do not change the OCPA rate design. The second is that we have a temporary opt-down. For 2025 and 2026, smart choice would be the default rate for Irvine customers. Individual customers may opt up to 100% renewable choice or opt down to basic choice at any time, or leave altogether to go to SoCal Edison. And that we also do a renewable energy content adjustment. And that is temporarily reduce the renewable energy content in smart choice to 55% for 2025 and 60% for 2026, supplemented with 40% carbon-free energy content. Thank you. Second.
I'm sorry, did your motion include going back to 100% renewable or not?
Yes, that would be going back to 100% in 2025. This opt-down would only be temporary.
I would support the motion if we didn't do that automatically. I think the constant shifting of our customers, first, it was a hard time letting them know that they were automatically into OCPA. Now we're changing them from one tier to another, then we're going to change them back. I would rather them, if they want to go to 100%, then they can call in and move up to that tier. Otherwise, I'm fine with leaving everyone at the smart choice tier. I could support that, but I don't want this flip-flopping of our customers over and over again.
Okay, yeah, I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's important to remember that, you know, again, Councilmember Treceder and I were not the two original board members, and the JPA was established and written with other board members that were not us. And so I think that, in which it was set up, was before we were there. I, I'm not on the board anymore, but at any point in time, we could have discussed the payback. This was not something that Councilmember Treceder, nor myself, put in the JPA, the agreement with the founding board members. And so I, I think it's important to realize that we will lose a board seat, and if we're fine with that, I don't know who's going to serve on the board, hopefully a Councilmember Treceder. Especially since we had a hard time figuring out who was going to serve on the board in the first place. Perhaps going down to one board member will be beneficial for us, since I am not sure we can even find two people to serve on the board. I served on the board specifically because we had two board seats and there was no one else willing to serve. Clearly, probably not the best decision, at least for me, even though I did it to serve our community. So I'm fine with just having one board seat, and that's it. We can get our money back, we can get the investment back, and we will no longer really be the, we'll no longer have two voices, I guess. So, thank you, Councilmember Treceder, for joining me and helping to clean up a lot of what was happening there. So I'm glad that everything is back on track. We just had an excellent financial audit. We got a report of that yesterday. Thank you to the staff of OCPA. Thank you for Joe Mosca. Thank you, Tiffany. I know you guys have been through really hard times, really, really tough times, and really helped pull the agency back up. And so at one point, my dream is, you know, for it to be as equally exciting as the Orange County mosquito and vector control. So anyway, I guess we could, whenever we want to call to question.
Oh, no, I'd like to respond to what you just stated. First of all, when we created OCPA, we funded it so that it would be functional. That doesn't mean that we would invest and ask for our money back the next day. But we've come far where there is money available, and a lot of people are funding to come back. And that's why the question came up about us asking for our investment back. It makes no sense that we would invest into an organization and within the year say, "Give us our money back." I don't even know where to start with that. Secondly, I don't know what kind of cleanup you did, because we're in this mess right now. And so I would be very careful about pointing fingers at people. And third, yes, the two seats are linked to our investment. So if we don't have an investment in OCPA, then we get one seat. That's just like any other board we sit on, whether it's TCA or any other JPA board that we sit on. We get the one seat, because we don't have a financial investment in it. And so there shouldn't be any issue with that at all. So Vice Mayor Agron, if you have something else to say?
I do. I want to speak to the motion.
Sure.
First, I just want to say, I think I'm interpreting what's being said very differently from the way others interpret it. I see this agency as in deep, deep trouble. I think it's circling the drain. I really do. I don't know exactly how this is going to end, but it isn't going to be pretty. And the fact that the whole reason this was being created was this was going to be forceful, effective climate action, and now we're backtracking on all of that and using the extraordinary charges to our customers in recent years as kind of play money to have sponsorships and show up at festivals and so forth. All of that is such a sideshow as compared with the real problem, which is, although Councilmember Treceder, and I stated this publicly, she thought the agency could be fixed. That it was a personnel problem and other things needed to be done to fix it. My sense of looking at this, and I confess openly, the whole commodities market and the volatility and all of this business is beyond my humble capacity to absorb and speak about in an authoritative way. But I get everything with happy talk here. "We're going to be okay," and it's a three-year program, so a little step back and so forth. I don't see it that way. I think this is the beginning of the end. I would like to begin to protect our ratepayers by tomorrow, having the city manager see to it that the city, as a customer, opt down to the basic rate. What would that save us, Mr. Chee?
Based on our current calculations, dropping from the 100% renewable tier to the basic rate, $700,000 a year.
About $60,000 to $70,000 a month, on average.
Correct.
Mayor, I want to propose that. I don't know whether it's in connection with this original motion or otherwise. I want to set that aside for a moment. Let me say what else I'd like to do, which is, I want us, as we should have done last year, but on a 3 to 2 vote, the vote was otherwise. I want us to, by December 31st, and preferably tonight, direct the city manager to send a letter, notification, to OCPA that we wish to withdraw effective July 1st, I guess it would be. I think we need to preserve that option. We absolutely need to preserve that option and get into serious negotiations with OCPA. Is there any downside, Mr. Chee, that you see to that?
The downside risk of engaging in that is it does create an unknown liability in that we'd have to engage in negotiations with OCPA to facilitate the withdrawal. The benefit is what you described. It forces a negotiation with OCPA into the city's future participation and would give the council more insight into options moving ahead.
So the county got out without any financial burden to them. The county got out, Huntington Beach got out. And if things go south, as I believe they will...
Vice Mayor, your time is up.
As Councilmember Carroll warned, we're apt to be left holding the bag here in the City of Irvine in one way or another, which I think would be pretty bad, pretty bad. So Mayor, as far as the main motion, which is to go down to the... What is the main motion precisely?
The current motion on the table is to basically accept the OCPA recommendation to shift Irvine in 2025 down to the middle tier, the smart choice option, that we would stay there definitely, and residents would have a choice to decide whether or not they want to opt up or down.
And the city as a customer, what about the city itself?
The city would then be shifted into that smart choice mid-tier also, as part of that.
The city, which is, of course, the taxpayers.
Correct.
Not the ratepayers, but the taxpayers. Mayor, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, maybe somebody could give me some help on this.
No, is it okay?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, no, sorry. You know, I think this is a lot to digest. Two of the five of us had this information for a period of time longer. I, I'm not, personally, I'm not entirely opposed to the idea. I would like to support opting completely down at the city level. We can do that as a separate motion. I'd be happy to second that, Vice Mayor. With regard to the main motion, I don't think I can get there this evening because it's been a lot. I appreciate OCPA's answers to these questions. I appreciate staff's work today. You know, there, it would be, I would be hard-pressed to support this, knowing that I'm not exactly sure what the import of this. On one hand, on one hand, this council, on a full-throated basis, for many of us, said, "Okay, we're going to go 100%." And I think we were the largest city ever to do this in the history of the CCA program statewide. And now we're being asked, based on understandable information, it's just, it's new information for me as a council member, to roll that back. I know that there was a lot of money spent in marketing for these programs. I know that we received a lot of pushback with respect to the automatic opt-in nature of this thing. We could do it over again. It might have maybe been better to start basic and then have people opt in, but the times were where they were. So I think for me, this seems like good information. We'll take it under advisement. Maybe we need the city, and again, it's something to think about. We can stay here longer and work it out. Maybe the city needs to, one of the things Mr. Chee mentioned was maybe we get our own third-party help of some nature to kind of take a look at this and see if we, as a city, concur with OCPA's projection of what this looks like. You know, I'm open to that. And with regard to the return of the capital, you know, it was my opportunity to do that. I've been consistent with that. I feel that if they're sitting on $90 million, $7.5 of it, you know, should be returned to us, and they should be able to work that out with the lender. And again, that's a board-driven thing. But I would be amenable to just holding. Thank you, OCPA, almost treat this piece of it as receive and file, provided we could get quick information, not leave OCPA kind of hanging out there, but quickly come back and maybe make some decisions on this. I just, I just don't think I could support doing this.
Certainly.
I'm reversing, you know, a path that I took for years, building something. This is, you know, it's a strange place to be. The one question that I think we all need to kind of look at inside as we think this through, of this city, which is what we're supposed to appear, not OCPA, but the city, is are we being asked to remove the rationale for the thing? And if so, then what is the point of this? I've been on record with, you know, general concern that these, the new cities that come on pay nothing to get in while our money sits there. You know, it's challenging, but I really appreciate all the information. It's actually a lot. So that would be my thought process, that I would, I just, for what it's worth, I would not be able to make that decision on that motion tonight, but that we maybe, as a city, for discussion, we go ahead and we try to get some of our own information. If that's helpful, but thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. While I have you guys here, maybe one of the questions that I'd like to know is why the county in Huntington Beach was not charged with anything? Why were they allowed to leave OCPA freely with no fines or anything of that sort?
So with respect to the county of Orange, the question of liability, how much they owe, is still not a resolved question. With respect to Huntington Beach, the goal in the beginning was to ensure that the customers were transitioned back to SC in the smoothest fashion possible and that there was no harm or liability to existing members of OCPA. And so we worked with them. We had enough time to work with them and to come up with creative solutions to ensure that neither OCPA members like Irvine or HB had any liability. It's also a product of the market, of when energy was purchased and when it was sold.
Okay, so see, that's another issue then. It's basically, cities can come in freely and they can leave freely on our backs.
No, so I would say that the fact is that Huntington Beach, Huntington Beach being a member was an absolute asset for Irvine and for the entire aggregate. It purchased a lot of, a whole lot of energy for Huntington Beach that later was re-marketed and resold that benefited OCPA. And that's why some of those reserves are where they're at. But Huntington Beach, the liability in being able to sell off certain assets diminished any liability, so there wasn't any liability at the end. But it was a benefit to OCPA as well.
Yeah, it's a benefit to OCPA, but it's not a benefit to us as a city of Irvine. I don't see that as a benefit.
Well, as a...
I just don't see it. I see it as, you know, we're... I just don't see it. I see it as, you know, we're being told at this last hour, we've got to make a decision or else, and we hear that over and over again, but other cities are coming and going as they please, and we're being told, oh, that's a benefit. That's not my benefit. It's not a benefit for our city. And we need to really have a clear distinction of what is beneficial for the city of Irvine and what's beneficial for OCPA. These are two different entities. And I think the faster and sooner we're able to do that, the better off OCPA will be, and the more trust the people will have. I mean, you know, and I'm saying this as someone who actually pays for energy through OCPA. I think four of us here actually are members of OCPA, or actually, three of us. I don't know if Larry Agron, I don't know if you are, but we're actual members of OCPA, and we pay into OCPA. So I'm speaking as a resident. I will be speaking as a resident in a few weeks, and I want to make sure that in order for me to continually defend OCPA, I need to be able to be reassured that everything that's being done is being done for the benefit of our city and our residents and the ratepayers, and that way I can be a better advocate for you.
I understand, Mayor. Thank you. No, we didn't, we, OCPA worked really hard to ensure that Huntington Beach stayed as a member. They decided to pull out. We worked with them to ensure that our customers were transitioned back and that the liability of OCPA was minimized. That's what happened at the end of the day, and OCPA was stronger, was financially stronger because of the separation in the end.
Okay, I just see it differently. Councilmember Carroll?
Yeah, Mr. Moska, let me just point that out. Mr. Moska, let me just, can I just follow up on that thing? So basically, so the way it worked is Huntington Beach, they withdraw, and they're liable for the cost of the withdrawal. So there were costs. So in a way, you could say that instead of sending Huntington Beach a bill for $0.00, right, you could have made them pay whatever those costs were, and you could have transferred that over to here and paid down our $7.5 million. See, the fundamental problem I have is this is a no-fault, no-risk, you know, no-worry opportunity for everybody except the largest load, the city of Irvine, California. So that's where, I've just given you a thought process, and we could talk about it tomorrow, if you want, but HB should have paid for the costs, and instead HB, as I understand correctly, in the county of Orange, paid zero to get out. So you can't say there weren't lawyer fees and consulting fees and SCE fees and whatever was done to withdraw out of this thing. And I don't know, maybe you know, you don't even have to tell me, you may have quantified it, you may not have. But there were costs. You could have charged the supervisors, and you could have charged the seven council members in the city of Huntington Beach, and you could have paid me the difference.
There were no, the cost did not exceed the benefit to OCPA with respect to Huntington Beach. With respect to the county of Orange, that is a very different story, and it's something that we're engaging the county of Orange right now. Was there profit when you got out of those two cities, or the city and the county?
For the county of Orange, they still owe OCPA about $900,000, and it's reported on our audit report just issued yesterday. And then for Huntington Beach, they do owe us a stranded RA liability for about $6 million, but because OCPA does have a responsibility to mitigate costs with them together. So we worked together, and then Huntington Beach decided to opt down their customers to basic choice, and then because of that, we saved a lot of renewable energy costs from there, and then the saving is over the stranded RA liability that they owe us. So at the end of the day, they do not owe us anything.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Agron?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I don't know what the proper priority or procedure would be.
We have a motion. You can make a substitute motion.
All right, let me just do it that way then. I'd like to move that we direct the city manager to contact the appropriate authorities and reduce the city's tier to the basic tier, the cheapest, the one that would save us roughly $60,000 a month. That's my substitute motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. I don't know why we wouldn't do this. I don't think I could look the residents in the eye tomorrow and say, yeah, we had a chance to direct the city manager to see to it that the city and its operations as an electricity customer reduced its costs, the cost to the taxpayers, by $60,000 a month.
And then would we come back at a later time for the general population discussion?
Yes, that's the only action I'm eager to take tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Kim?
If we could just clarify, was the, that was just a substitute motion, or is that a friendly amendment?
It was a substitute motion.
To the existing?
It was characterized as, and I think it properly characterized as, a substitute motion.
Okay. I mean, I would be inclined to second, or to agree to a second?
I already seconded it.
No, no, no. I understand that. But as the second to the main motion, I would be inclined, as the second to the main motion, if you wanted to add that as an amendment, if the maker of the original motion wanted, because I...
Point of procedure, parliamentary procedure, if I might just ask the city attorney, the fact that it's a substitute motion doesn't preclude, assuming it's adopted, doesn't preclude another motion after it. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just to, just to agree with you, it obviates the main motion, but it doesn't preclude anybody from making another motion.
Which is, from making the same motion, basically.
Correct. That's right.
It's not a defeat of that main motion. It is simply a substitution to be acted upon first.
That's correct.
I don't think you should have a problem with that, but up to you.
Right. Councilmember Treceder?
Okay.
Councilmember?
You're calling on me. Okay. Yeah, so thank you. I just want to reiterate that, yes, I have agreed to bring this to the board if I'm on the board next year to get the loan paid back, for sure. I would argue that bringing the city down to basic would not follow our climate action and adaptation plan, a large portion of which is the city being on renewable energy. We will be still maintaining our renewable energy, I mean, our greenhouse gas goals, because in addition to the renewable energy, we would have that 40% of carbon-free energy. So it is a pretty cheap way for the city to remove that much greenhouse gases. So I would argue against that, but if that is the will of the council, I will support that.
Okay. Vice Mayor Agron, did you have any additional comments?
No, I would just encourage my colleagues to take this minimal step, but important step tonight, which is to direct the city manager to...
Councilmember Carol?
...to it that we are put in the basic, in the basic category.
Councilmember Carol?
Sorry, can you just, I just want to make sure I, can we just do the, or have the city attorney just repeat the motion or the, where we're at on the substitute, or just so I...
Certainly. The substitute motion is before the council. The substitute motion is to direct the city manager to reduce the city, the city of Irvine, as a customer of OCPA, to the basic tier. The end. That's it. That's what's before you.
And just for the council's information, the basic tier includes 44% renewable energy compared with, I think the proposal to move to smart choice that OCPA presented was 50%. There's that consideration also.
Okay. Councilmember Kim?
Yes. Okay, so I'm going to make a substitute to the substitute. I will, and if I don't get a second, because what I don't want is, well, we'll just lay it out. So to Councilmember Agron's point, reduce the city of Irvine to basic tier into Councilmember Treceder, plus moving Irvine residents down to smart choice, and should Councilmember Treceder be on the board, she can ask for the $7 million back. And that is my motion.
Second? Okay. So we have a substitute to the substitute. City Clerk, please conduct your roll call vote.
Councilmember Carroll?
No.
Councilmember Kim?
Yes.
Councilmember Treceder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Agron?
No.
Mayor Khan?
No.
Motion fails two to three. Councilmember Carroll, Vice Mayor Agron, and Mayor Khan voted no.
Then we go to the substitute motion.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim?
No.
Councilmember Treceder?
No.
Vice Mayor Agron?
Yes.
Mayor Khan?
Yes.
Carries three to two with councilmembers Kim and Treceder voting no.
And then...
At this point, if there's consideration for the request from OCPA, my understanding is, decision needs to be made before the end of the calendar year. And any made earlier, if there's another motion as relates to the entire ratepayer base in Irvine, what classification we would move the ratepayers to as part of our membership in OCPA, that's an open question if the council would like to take that up this evening or continue it to a different meeting date.
Councilmember Treceder?
I just want to check, am I able to make another motion at this point?
Yes.
Okay. I move, let's see, so I have to pull this up. I move that we have no change in OCPA rate design, that we opt down our customers to smart choice as the default rate product, that we adjust our renewable energy content down to, for the smart choice, down to 55% for 2025, and for 2026, supplemented with 40% carbon-free content, and that I will also bring to the board, next year if I am on the board, a request that Irvine be paid back the 7.5 million that we have loaned to OCPA. Thank you.
Second? City Attorney, could you repeat that motion?
Certainly, Mayor. The motion had five parts to it. The first was that the rate design remain unchanged. The second was that the residents and businesses in the city of Irvine be reduced to the smart choice tier. Those that... Third was that those residents and businesses, customers, would retain the ability, once they're moved to that smart choice tier, to move back or move up or down from there. They would still have optionality at that point. Fourth, that the smart choice tier content be changed such that it is 55% renewable plus 40% carbon-free for 2025, then 60% renewable plus 40% carbon-free for 2026. And last, that Councilmember Treceder, if she is a member of the OCPA board in 2025, will bring to the board a request that the city of Irvine be repaid in full for its capital loan agreement, which I think the outstanding balance on is $7.5 million.
And when is Buena Park voting on their process?
We're working with the team there right now. There hasn't been a time that's been scheduled. The OCPA Board of Directors just had a meeting yesterday. Vice Chair Sani, who is mayor of Buena Park, is working on it right now and will get it, is attempting to get it on their agenda.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Agron?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it if I might. I'm going to vote no, not because I'm necessarily opposed to the substance of it, but I feel woefully unprepared to weigh in on these various percentages, and the authority of the motion certainly isn't consistent with my understanding, which is deficient in what the hell is going on here. The fact that this information comes to us at this time, when in fact it should have come to us in September, is very troubling. I think we need some expert assistance here. If I thought it had three votes, I would be inclined to vote to give notice of our intent to withdraw, but I don't think those votes are here tonight. We're not getting, in my judgment, the independent expert advice we need to make any thoughtful decisions tonight, and it just seems to me this is something that's, that should be kicked over to the new council. I regret that, but that's why I would vote no. I would, maybe, maybe procedurally, and you could help me with this, Mr. City Manager, if I were to move to continue the matter to the next city council meeting, or to a December city council meeting, would that be in order at this point, as a substitute motion, or should the main motion just be voted on one way or the other?
You absolutely can make a substitute motion to continue, and it would take priority over the main motion, or be heard first, anyway.
Well, let me do that then. I'll just offer a substitute motion to matter to a meeting of the new city council in December. We probably should put it on the December 10th council meeting agenda. That would be, that would be my substitute motion.
I'll second it. Councilmember Treceder?
Yeah, I just want to check. So the December 10th meeting, which part of it you wanted to?
Well, it would not be this council. I presume it would be the new council. You know, it doesn't have to be December 10th. It could be a special meeting after that. I don't, just a meeting in December. Let me just put it that way.
Okay, I just, I am concerned a little bit on behalf of our new colleagues that they're going to be starting from ground zero and will need to... and will need to be gotten up to speed very, very quickly on a very long history of OCPA. Especially if it were the December 10th meeting, which I think is dedicated to, you know, voting for the vice mayor and the great part... Well, maybe the great park board chair and vice chair. But you will be the mayor. So are you saying that you would call a special meeting for later in December?
I think so. Or it could be a meeting that we set right here, right now, in December.
Okay, so I think... I am concerned about our new colleagues. They're going to be having their holidays. They're going to be trying to set up their offices. They're going to have a lot that they're going to be trying to do in December. I, myself, I wouldn't have wanted to vote on something like this the very first time that I came in to... As the very first real meeting that we would have. So I would argue against that, if possible, just out of consideration for them and just kind of putting them on the hot seat a bit. So I would vote no on this, myself. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to make a clarification. A motion to continue is in order and is not debatable. Is that correct?
It is. This... And it... My... It was a choice that was made and when it was made as a substitute motion instead of a straight-up motion to continue, which was another way of going. My apology.
No, thank you. With that, City Clerk, please conduct her roll call vote.
Councilmember Carroll.
No.
Councilmember Kim.
No.
Councilmember Treseder.
No.
Vice Mayor Agron.
Yes.
Mayor Khan.
All right, hold on. I'm voting yes, I think. I'm confused.
The motion is to...
Is it to continue? Apologize, Clerk, I'm a yes.
And Mayor Khan.
Yes.
Carries three to two with councilmembers Kim and Treseder voting no.
Thank you.